Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August 20th, 9:00 AM council meeting. Would you please stand for your further instructions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does any member of the council have a conflict of interest or the appearance of a conflict of interest with regard to any item on the agenda, and if so, please state so at this time?
No.
No.
I do not.
I do not. I do not.
Amendment and approval of the draft agenda?
I don't have anything.
Yes, sir.
Council discussions?
Mr. Mayor, I read with some interest, it was an article in the Star News, I believe it was from the Bureau of Engineering Management regarding the wind farm that was supposed to be off our coast at some point in time. The article stated that the wind farms will only be, there will not be any wind farm self of Cape Hatteras. So evidently, the wind farm off of Sunset Beach, the other areas near Wilmington and south of Wilmington have been, this is what they reported, have been, has been indefinitely postponed.
That's true.
I don't know if anybody can follow up on that, but that's what, that's what was reported. I know it was a big issue at the time when the plan was being developed, but it sounds like they have honed in on reality, hopefully.
Anything else? John?
Yeah, I have one. There was a, there was a sensitive situation on the beach, and I'd like to commend the police and fire department for the professional job they did this weekend. Officer Lee Hall and Officer Jonathan Rawls, as well as Captain William Bennett from the fire department, and firefighter Joseph Fulmer responded to the situation and handled it quite well and quite professionally. They did a good job representing the town of Sunset Beach and their departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, old business, ERC appointment considerations?
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like to make a comment before we, before we, I guess this is to appoint the people to the ERC.
Yes, ma'am.
When we last had the board appointment, it came to my attention afterwards that we really hurt some feelings and weren't following an established protocol or what have you by, by selecting someone who was already on the board, by not selecting someone who was already on the board and putting someone new in there. I did not know that that was a policy at that time. It's not our written policy. I think this is not such a good policy because if we only have two board appointments open and the two people that are in those seats want to reapply, there's not a good reason to advertise for somebody to apply because they're going to be rejected automatically. So I think we ought to, at some point, address this, what I consider a little bit of a problem. Because if I were in the community and I applied for a job that advertised and then I saw that I had no hope of getting it, you know, I...
Jan, are you talking about the ERC or are you talking about other board appointments?
I'm talking about other board appointments.
Oh, okay. I think she's talking in general, as a general rule.
Well, I tried to put a motion through to have term limits for boards, for boards. That was rejected. And the reason for that was so that we, we need to encourage new blood. More people have began to apply for board positions than before. And the problem that we face is, for example, on the planning board's appointment, there are two, there are two vacancies and three people apply. They're all extremely qualified, no question. So how does a new person break into the system, which I call sometimes a glass ceiling? Because it's very difficult if you're, if you're not on the board, to get on the board because people don't, people don't resign. Now, we had the previous board appointment that we made was the Board of Adjustments. The person that was on the board did an excellent job for years, and he was not appointed. His feelings were devastated because no one explained to him why he was not appointed. And it puts us in a precarious position when that occurs, that if we just arbitrarily put someone new on the board, it's going to hurt people's feelings. And that's why I attempted to put this motion through, so that we can avoid that, so that we can advertise for new blood. There's nothing like new blood. People see things differently, and we should encourage that. But when you have people on boards for 10, 12 years, very difficult to break. And what's going to happen is people are going to say, "Why the heck should I apply?" And that's what hopefully will not happen, but that's what we're creating. You know, it's, it's, it has to be addressed, we have to study it, we don't want to hurt people's feelings. Everybody on the boards have always done an excellent job, I haven't heard any complaints. They enjoy what they're doing, and then to be arbitrarily removed without explanation and pick someone else, it creates, it creates hard feelings. So we need to be sensitive to that. So I don't have the solution. I don't think because there are two people who are applying that we shouldn't advertise. I'm a former affirmative action officer, so I have issues with that. But we need to decide what we want to do. I think if you serve on the board for six years, I think that's plenty of time. That's my opinion. If no one applies for the position and you want to remain on the board, you're more than happy to do so. So that's how I feel on that position.
If I can real quick, did we skip public comments on agenda items?
Yes.
I mean, this could be considered that as well. I want to give the public an opportunity to speak. Yeah? Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Public comments on agenda items.
Never mind that. Okay. Are we still talking about?
ERC.
Are we still talking about the overall process?
I'm finished with the overall.
Yeah, I'm finished. I said my piece. The only thing with the ERC I'd like to add...
Well, I'd like to make a comment on the overall, the overall picture there. You know, one of the things, I've got mixed feelings about whether we set term limits. I don't necessarily think that works. I have mixed feelings about automatically extending people. I know that they have done a good job. Each time we appoint somebody in the council, it's a different situation. One of the things to remember is we have been elected onto the town council to try to think as a group and act in the best service of the town. Sometimes that requires difficult decisions, and sometimes they're easy decisions. I just don't think there's, there's a black and white answer that jumps out at me for this situation at this time. And I don't have any specific recommendations of what changes to make and how to make them equitable across the board.
I have a suggestion.
Go ahead, ma'am.
That we eliminate the understanding, the, and it's not, it's not a written policy, it was a policy set up by previous council, an understanding that if you're on a board and your term is up, your years is up, that you're going to automatically be reinstated if you apply to be. That, that understanding should be eliminated. That's my opinion.
I'm not aware that that was an existing understanding.
I wasn't either until after the fact.
And it's like I said, I'm not aware of that, and there have been multiple instances in the last two or three years where we appointed somebody and not appointed somebody who was already on the board and wanted to continue. And it wasn't just the Board of Adjustment that that happened, and we appointed a new person to pull that over. We also had a situation where one of the serving members whose time on the board was finished and that person didn't realize that they had to reapply to continue. So there's a clarification in the policy, still now the town clerk notifies everybody when a term limit is up, that their limit is up, so they will not be surprised and will know that they have to reapply. But that reapplication is not an invitation that they are automatically going to be appointed.
No, that wasn't ever received. I just think as town council at this time, we're going to have to make decisions that do not please everybody. It's simply we have to have a qualified person on those boards. And feelings are hurt sometimes, that's just the way it is.
I agree, I agree with you, Mark. However, I got a lot of correspondence after the last board appointment and phone calls, and I would, I would like for that to not happen again, that that not be an understanding that you're automatically reappointed.
What you're saying is it's a lifetime appointment.
Right, that's right. It's not.
I agree with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Not appointing the person already serving in the case Jan is talking about was not an arbitrary decision, it was based on fact and the situation and health issues and so on. And it was not an easy decision, it was a hard decision. And, but again, we have to do what we feel is the best interest in, in the best interest of the town.
I agree. All right, ERC appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I guess there's, there's two matters with this. One is appointing a person that is a property tax person, home to home, within the limits of Sunset Beach, and, but he's not a resident of Sunset Beach. So there's two issues. I have no problem appointing a person who is a taxpayer to a board. I assume that if that person is appointed, they will attend the meetings and do their due diligence and study and research. So I have no reason, at least in my own mind, to resent one serving on a board that may not be a resident but is a property owner. And to get the ERC started, there are four members, there are four applicants that have applied, and they all seem uniquely qualified, and I see no reason not to appoint the property owner.
Mr. Mayor?
You go ahead, Jan.
I disagree. I, I think that sets a very dangerous precedent because we have property owners that live all over this state and other states. I, I think that sets a dangerous prop, prop...
This was...
Resident plus, plus, I'm not sure what it does to our, we have, we have ground rules, don't we? For ETJ, and I don't know what the ground rules are for that.
Well, the, the person in question doesn't even live in the ETJ, they're just outside of that as well. But when you set up the rules, because y'all want to involve in land use issues as well, that's why we said we wouldn't have an at-large county resident, a county resident that we had last time with ERC, that's why we kept it to ETJ number, it was going to be outside the town limits, just to keep everything clean with their involvement in land use matters. There's two routes to go with that. Maybe remove their contribution to the TRC as a guarantee, and then let the planning board request their assistance instead for developmental matters, instead of having them automatically contribute, then it'll be an advisory committee to the planning board. That's one way to allow this to happen, or they have to recuse themselves from any land use matters that are defined under Article 19 of General Statute 168.
I, I think there's a little bit more to go to consider. If we're going to change ERC rules, that's what we're talking about, then we have a process. If we're going to change the ERC rules, then we have to go through and make sure that we consider what we're going to do. If we're changing it to allow a property owner outside the ETJ to come in, for example, are we going to set some other type of limits, like they live within the far district? One of the key things, it has to be a reasonable understanding that they live close enough that they can come to the meetings. And presume somebody living in Raleigh, for example, is not going to come down to all the ERC meetings. The second one was pointed out with the technical review process. We can't use somebody outside our town limits or ETJ if we're writing that into the rules, so we have to modify the rules to accommodate that. I don't have any problem with discussing doing that, but I think it takes more than just a quick knee-jerk reaction to do it at this particular meeting. So we, one is, so one point, one issue is how are we going to address the ERC rules and that? I think the second one, we still would be left with three people to nominate and appoint to the ERC. I would be comfortable starting off, if, if we do not change our rules at this point in time, we would still have three qualified candidates for the ERC. And I would have no trouble appointing them and telling them to, you know, to go to work. And with that combination, readvertise for additional key positions, and then give some initial instructions such as they've got to go have a meeting, they've got to go select who's going to be the chairman and the secretary, they should take and come up with some, some of their sets of priorities of what they should recommend to us as a council as actions for them to active, issues for them to start looking at. So, but, you know, I, I was comfortable with at this point in time and then discuss the ERC rules and readvertise separately.
Liz, can you help me out? Does this mayor's...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor? One second. Charlie's next.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I, I agree 100% with Jan. This is not the time to change rules. You know, we have these rules, we have to live by them, and if we don't get enough qualified, three people is enough to start this with. And I think it's good to get it started and get them on the road, and people see what's going on, maybe we can get some more applicants. But to change the rules is a dangerous precedent.
Can we address John's issues? Can we address that and fix that so that John can be on the board, or that's something we cannot do?
Ms. Farrell's request is that he indemnify from everything. Y'all aren't indemnified from everything. You'd be given the ERC powers and authority, I mean protections that you don't get everybody else. There is liability that they're covered from doing their actions as a member of town, but they, you know, anybody can be singled out to be sued, and that's his concerns. That's what they were explaining to me. But, I mean, I guess if y'all want to, you have to enter into a contract with each member of the ERC in order to give them indemnity.
Right.
And you don't do that for any other board, you only do that for two employees of the town, actually one because you don't contract with the attorney. So, you, you know, you see what I'm saying? The, the rules are you have to enter into a contract.
Plus, Mr. Farrell withdrew from consideration in writing.
Because of this.
Correct.
And if that's something y'all want to explore, I feel that needs a deeper review of consequences.
Rich, you got something, ma'am?
Yeah. When, sir, does this person has a house in Sunset Beach? I'm just trying to...
Mm-hmm.
He has a home in Sunset Beach.
Mm-hmm.
He's a taxpayer, but he's not a resident. It's, it's that simple.
And he's not a resident of the ETJ either.
He's close. He's not in the ETJ either.
Right.
Not in the ETJ either.
No, his house is in Sunset, in...
Yeah, but his house is in the corporate limits of Sunset Beach. That includes the ETJ.
No. In other words, his house is in Sunset Beach.
Yes, it's secondary, secondary residence.
Secondary, yeah.
His primary residence is outside the ETJ.
Okay. We'll discuss that, all right? We're going to leave it alone?
I think on the agenda in the future that we, maybe we look at the rules of ECR, so maybe within the future, we could put a square miles, you know, five miles within the town of Sunset Beach or the ETJ that they could be on the board if it was a ten mile radius of town.
You still then have to look at the land use rules. And I mean, I can, I can help you find ways around that, the simplest being that they just have to recuse themselves anytime you're discussing an actual land use option.
Right.
And those are very specific to the UDO, not land use as in watershed studies, things like that, but I don't, specifically developmental items in the town.
Yeah, if they're looking into probably that would occur.
Well, it will occur whenever, let's say the departments that recently went to planning board.
Right.
Your rules have the ERC as part of the TRC, Technical Review Committee. So they have to attend the TRC meeting, or actually the TRC meeting will attend one of their meetings, basically, and they, they give their input based on what their suggestions would be to a land use matter, and then that goes to the planning board. And because of that, that's why they had to establish as city resident or ETJ resident because of the, the state's general statutes with who's allowed to involve themselves in land use. Now, like I said, there's two options around that, but the rules have to be tweaked to allow for that. And if you'd rather go ahead and establish the committee today, as Council and Corporal is saying, get three candidates, revise your rules later, and then revisit the other possible candidates or readvertise, y'all have that option. You do have enough qualified candidates today to establish the committee if that's the way you want to go with it.
Well, I don't want us to turn the whole world upside down, so it may be just simpler and more fair to appoint three members of the ERC and then just advertise and try to recruit other candidates.
May I make a motion?
I'd like to say one, one more thing. I, I believe that with proper advertising, we can get two more members on ERC.
Yeah, 11 of the town.
I really do.
Okay. Good, that sounds good. John, you're ready to motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, one, reactivate the ERC with three initial members, that we appoint Tim Kenny and Peter Larkin for two-year terms, and we appoint Sarah Ramsey for a one-year term, and that we advertise for the two additional positions.
Second.
And, Mr. Scott? The, the reason for appointing Sarah, Sarah Ramsey to a one-year position, if anybody has any questions, is that she's actively looking, she just graduated from school, from college, she's actively looking for a new job, and she anticipates within a year to be moving from that job. But she has a environmental background in her college degree that would be beneficial to the committee, so appointing her for a one-year term. For situation changes, she can reapply.
All favor?
Whoa, 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 discussion.
Do you want to discuss?
No, he made, he made the motion. My only concern is, and I don't have trouble with the motion, but I think it's up to the ERC themselves which term appointment they would like. I don't think the council should decide their term appointments. I think that's something that they can have a meeting and decide themselves and inform the town what the appointments are. I disagree with that. That was done before.
It only happens, it only happens when, when the ERC is formed. Once, once these terms are set up, they're, they're set. So anybody applying for a vacant would, would be under that, whatever. I think after, after the first year or two years, they all become two-year terms or something like that. Is that not correct?
Two years.
All subsequent positions.
This is, this is just for this first, first time, right. And the council did set the terms for the last ERC.
And our rules are, quote, "The initial appointments that are made immediately following the adoption of this policy shall be for terms on a staggered basis, two positions for one year and three positions for a two-year term. All subsequent appointments except those to fill in uninspired terms shall be for two years." So, and, and with that basis, that's why I suggested two, one, and because Ms. Ramsey indicated she highly likely not to be here by the end of that time.
No, if I recall, I think we just approved the committee before, and the members of the committee picked their, that wasn't the case.
Okay.
The members of the committee picked their chairman and, and secretary.
Okay, John made the motion, Charlie seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, if I can real quick, we're having issues with our sound in the sound room.
Okay.
Can we take a five-minute recess? The tech advisors just restarting the whole thing and seeing if we can get it set up so anybody who's watching or wants to go back and re-watch this, they can actually hear what we're saying?
Okay. Five-minute recess, back to the session. Okay, next up is the planning board appointment consideration. We have three candidates, two seats. Three candidates.
I'd like to make a motion that we reapply...
Speaking to Mike.
Sorry. Will you let, will you let Tom in the call with the planning board?
Hello?
No, I don't.
Second? Second. Discussing?
Well, we've kind of already discussed that whole issue, and we just point out that all three, Mr. Don Edgar was highly qualified also, and hopefully he would apply again next round.
All in favor? Next up is the Oyster Bay Road closure request. Fire?
Yes, sir. In the, in your packet, there's a map that, the extra map, because I don't have a map, that shows, it is an unopened right-of-way with the Oyster Bay development that, I can't remember if it was originally supposed to be opened, it was going to be... that, um, I can't remember if it was originally supposed to be open, it was going to be a disruption entrance or how this would all play out, but essentially no road was ever constructed there. Uh, so what we're requesting is to allow us to go through the process of closing down that right-of-way, which will then get the property over to the adjoining property owners, divide it evenly. And in order to achieve that, what we have to do is, we need y'all to approve the resolution of intent to close Oyster Bay Drive right-of-way, known as sixty-foot access street on the map. We need to schedule a public hearing for October seventh at seven PM, because we have to do at least thirty days' notice, and by the time my next meeting comes around, it'll be less than that, or four consecutive weeks. And direct staff to publish the resolution for four consecutive weeks, mail the resolution by certified mail to the joint property owners, post the notice, and then on October seventh, after the public hearing, y'all can officially close this right-of-way that's never been opened.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've sat down with Ryan and he clearly explained the whole thing, and I actually took a site visit. I would like to file a motion to approve the sixty-access street resolution and to schedule a public hearing for October seventh at seven PM and to request the staff to publish the resolution for four successful weeks to mail the resolution by certified mail to the joint property owner and to post the notice along the street.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, I have a question. Is is there a downside to this impact on the town, negative effect? I don't, I don't see any, I'm just asking the question.
Um, no, not not really to the town. The joint property owners will have more property.
So they'll pay more tax?
Well, yeah, but it also makes more, a little bit more developable as well for them, or more useful. But for the town, there's no detrimental effect or whatsoever.
How do they develop it, that property?
That's currently developable. It's properly zoned residential for that area. It's just, no one's ever made use of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Charlie.
This has been going on for twelve years. When I saw it on the agenda, I thought it was about a dumb deal. Well, before I was elected to the council, the POA has, for all intent and purpose, closed that area. There's a line of holly trees that's close to the roadway. You couldn't get in there with a vehicle if you tried. So it's time to just move on with this and have a public hearings. And little Republican.
All in favor? And next up, variable message signs, Chief.
Good morning. If I may, before I begin, at the break, I introduced a couple of you two interns going to be spending a couple of months with us. Ashley Daniels, seated over here in the corner, just wave at Ashley, is a student at George Mason University studying criminology, and she's going to spend some time with us seeing what we do here in Sunset Beach. The project, or what you have in your packet here for variable message signs was to put this together at your direction when we talked about the use of our sign, our portable message board sign that we have that also is used as a speed trailer, detects speed and displays speeds as folks drive by that. In addition to obtaining an additional quote for another one of those identical items, I went ahead and did a comparable item from a company called Wainco, and then added a few permanent solutions for the island if council would choose to do so, just to give you a complete view of of what is out there and what is possible for the entrance to the island. As you can see there in the packet, the very first one is the sign that we currently have through MTH, or I'm sorry, through Custom Signals. That is a variable message sign with the radar unit for just over fifteen thousand. Uh, the second one, which shows event parking ahead, which is a bright orange device. And that same company offers a pole-mounted sign, which is just attached to that with a solar panel on it. Uh, the pole-mounted sign is eleven-one, and then Wainco's trailer is fourteen thousand plus six hundred dollars in freight for that bright orange one. It's more of a construction-looking sign. As you move on through the packet, the very next sign that you'll see is a post-mounted sign that has a nice facade at the top there that says Welcome to Sunset Beach. Underneath that, where it says upcoming events, that's a full-color LED. Graphics can be put on there, a waving flag or whatever we would want to do. And this is something that anybody here in the office that had access to that sign could do it from here. You would not have to physically go to the sign to change the message, it could be done here.
Chief, that's a Stewart sign, correct?
It is a Stewart sign, correct. And that device, sixteen-five-nine-four for that one, which is the cheapest of the options that they gave us. And I'll come back to that in a minute with what was recommended perhaps from Stewart as an alternative. The one after that shows a brick facade at the bottom of a very similar sign. And again, this is not actual masonry, this is a facade. Again, a full-color LED, single-sided, for just over twenty thousand dollars for that second option. Lastly, again, from Stewart signs, is more of a stucco sign. Again, with the Welcome to Sunset Beach, full-color LED that we could remotely change the message, single-sided, just under twenty-five thousand, double-sided, about thirty-three-five. We had a nice conversation on the phone with myself and the representative from Stewart signs about hurricanes and how these signs could possibly hold up. Their recommendation was, and this would save the town a little bit of money too, if we went with this pole-mounted design, sunk the poles in a little bit further and contracted with a local mason to put brick all the way around it that would probably enhance the, I guess, life expectancy of the sign if we had another hurricane roll through.
So Chief, you're looking to put this sign on the beach and use the existing signs for the rest of that?
I'm just bringing this to council for you to make a a decision. We have a portable message sign, which, as you know, is very beneficial on the island for multi-use messages and concert information, trash pickup, where to park, where not to park. And there's also a long list of requests for folks that want that in their neighborhoods to slow people down. Uh, we use it for the 5K, the half marathon, we use it for other events in the town. We've used it for the hurricanes, watch for debris in the roadway, so it can't always be dedicated to the island. Um, and again, I put this together at your direction just to kind of give you some ideas of what was out there. Now, Stewart did give me a PDF file that had probably thirty-some different variations of their signs. She put together the top three that she thought would be pleasing to the eye and just for you folks to look at. This is something that I would say I don't think was, I know it wasn't much.
Chief, just a couple of questions. I think in your write-off or your documentation that you would, that you mentioned that you would like to have the same sign that we have now. Did I read that correctly?
No. At the meeting where we discussed this, it was recommended by one of the council members.
What sign do you want? What sign do you want?
What sign do I want?
Yeah.
I had, I had a sign. I have one.
You want to purchase another unit?
I believe this was at the direction of council that this was put together for.
Yes, which which device do you want?
I like the permanent, I like the permanent signs. I think it's it's a, it's a nicer-looking device versus a trailer on wheels with a sign there that we have to physically go to. I think a permanent device would be much more appealing to the eye, to our visitors, to our residents, to see that with the the nice facade on it that says Welcome to Sunset Beach.
The location of the permanent sign would be, that would be a question.
Right, where we've, I I'm assuming where we've put that, our message board now, right as you come across the bridge, right before you get to to North Shore.
Well, when you say a permanent sign, it's still movable, is it not?
No.
It it would be mounted into the ground and.
Yeah, there would be a base, the sign would be set on top of it, and it would.
I I can tell you how many people have walked up to me and told me how bad that sign was, tell garbage pickups, it's changed. I think it's something we have to really look into, and I I personally like the, on the beach, the permanent sign where she said we could hire a mason, put some type of brick around it to make it more desirable, more look better.
Prior to making that decision, that would involve an encroachment agreement with DOT. I'm, I don't foresee them not helping us out, but just in case, I don't recommend making a full decision. If that's the way y'all would like us to go, we can research and see if DOT will enter into an encroachment agreement with us so that we can place the sign in there right-of-way at that location where it's been. But again, this has just been directed by y'all for the possibility of another sign. We didn't know if this is to pull the trigger now, wait till budget. It's up to y'all.
One, one of the questions that I have, if we put a permanent sign, you know, during during the the busy summer season, you know, obviously from Memorial Day to to Labor Day and a couple of days beyond, like Sunset at Sunset, on the island with lots of tourists comes in. After that, there are large parts of the year where, you know, you don't necessarily need the signage on on the island. And and, you know, and I live on the island, I recognize that, actually. Three out of five of us of the council members live on the island. Uh, and it's been a good thing that we want to make sure that we're clear that we want a permanent sign and then think, we have other ways to get into town, other parts of, other parts of the town, and whether that's the optimum thing to do. I have mixed views.
Jeff?
I really like the sign we have and the versatility of where it can be put. I do agree we need another one like that, one for the mainland and one for the island, because there's so many other uses I can see for one on the island, but only during our heavy usage months during the summer. And I can see that there are other neighborhoods on the mainland that need one as well, and it can be moved around where it's needed. I I like the idea of having two of those, but anything else, I'm I'm not ready to discuss until budgeted.
Mayor, Chief, would this permanent one be able to take pictures of cars coming on the island?
It would not.
No, can we put that on that?
Not from Stewart. Yeah, though even the one that we have from Custom Signals currently only tracks speeds of vehicles, it doesn't take pictures.
Like in terms of the breaking entries we have in the wintertime, this way, there's another way that we deter people from coming over by car, because we monitor the cars that go over.
Right, we budgeted for additional surveillance cameras for the island, and we're in the process of working with the vendor now to have those situated.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I, I can't see a permanent sign on the island. I could see dedicating it for, I'll say, four months to get shoulder seasons, but basically it's, it wouldn't be used for much peak months of the year. And I don't know, I don't want to put that much money into something that's only used pretty much four months of the year.
I I think a duplicate of the of the sign we have now would be optimal. It should give us the maximum flexibility to put it where we need it, when we need it, and and do do whatever the function is. There's always plenty of roads that need to be monitored for speed limits.
Do you need another radar sign?
With the demand that we've had for that one, it would be beneficial. It would be, I just wanted to give the council, I didn't want to just bring the one thing. I wanted to give you a full range of what was out there and whatever direction you wish to go.
Well, that's what's taking it away from the beach, right, is the radar?
Yes, sir.
So basically, we need another sign.
Right, so the off-season, when there's not as many folks on our island, we could put two, deploy two different signs in different locations throughout Sunset Beach.
And there's a, there's a need for that also.
Well, with two signs, we could justify using two portable signs?
We can.
No, that's true. This isn't a question for a budget amendment now to look at it for next year's budget.
I agree with Ms. Harris. I don't think this is a life-and-death decision at this point. I have no objections having two signs, and I have no objections having another sign like we had, so here's mobility. I don't know what the end cost is. Last year, we kept on approving items that were not budgeted, and we need to pull in the reins. This can be discussed at budget session next year by new council. And I don't want to get us into the habit, we just finished the budget, here we are in August, and I don't want to, unless the sheriff can assure us that this is zero sum. He has the funds somewhere that he can transfer so that this is not a budget amendment. I would have no objections, but I I I think, I think we should wait till the budget session.
I disagree with Rich on that, because if we wait till the budget season, it would be at the third of the way into the season already, May and June, so that's when we need that sign.
I think we've identified a need, you know, the cost is fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, and and go ahead and get it, then we've got, we can use it.
Uh, we don't need a budget amendment, do we, now?
Uh, yes, we will need a budget amendment. We we get a shoestring budget for y'all this year, so any additions to that will involve a budget amendment.
And this is, how much money, again?
Fifteen thousand three hundred dollars would be the exact same sign.
Do we have to have a message sign? Can we get one that just gives the speed limit? And would that be less expensive? Because that's what we're using it for. That is, well, we use it for the other things too. Right, we, when we take this one off the beach, we're using it just for a speed limit.
Not always.
I would like to make a motion. I'd like to move that we purchase another sign, just like the one we have right now.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
We can make simple things difficult sometimes.
I'd just say y'all know that the break did not fix what's going on with our sound, so the video is going to be garbled if you go back for it. Maybe there's something happened with the update on the computer or somebody messed with our soundboard. So, um, we're going to get that looked at sometime this week.
Okay, next up is new business, request for private road repair assistance.
Mr. Mayor, I have a legal question.
On this?
On this.
Okay, let, let, Rich.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Lewis. There's a little history here that I won't repeat, but I did view the pothole, and it was deep and dangerous. And when the town went over to examine it, someone filled it. I was told this morning that the hole has now been created. The pothole is there, there's a cone on it. If you could just have the town look at it and to see if they would provide financial assistance as stated by the policy. People told me this morning the pothole has been recreated. Who filled it? Huh? How did it be recreated if it was still there last week? Evidently, the rain washed it away, evidently a homeowner. Let me finish. Evidently, a homeowner repaired the pothole and put dirt, rocks in it. Then the rain came in and washed it away. That's what I'm told, so the only thing that I'm asking, that is be revisit it.
No rush. They're all three sitting here right now, so after this meeting, they can go take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
After this meeting, they'll go take a look at it.
Charlie, do you have something? Yeah, I, I, I. It looks like Wainco, we we should spend up to five hundred dollars to repair these potholes. I did go look at the potholes yesterday, and I would want to hit one at a very high speed. But my legal question is, Blaine Lewis, the president of the POA, has made threats of deanization and lawsuits, and he's. of de-annexation and lawsuits and disparaged former mayor, council members, current mayor, council members and our attorney. So I, I just have to wonder if this should have some type of, I hate to build up more attorney fees, but where will the town stand with this?
Hyrum, if I may, this policy was created in 2012.
Yes, sir.
And it was designed for people who were annexed. When the town annexed this section or this street, I am told that during the annexation process, there was a, there was a handshake and that the property owners were told by the town, true or not, I don't know, I can't validate it, that the property owners were told that the town would repair the roads. They didn't when they asked for some road repair assistance. The policy was developed in 2012 of those who were annexed when the annexation program invaded the town. And this has been a sour point ever since. They have a pothole that when they called and I looked at was, needs to be repaired. Everyone should expect at least a safe road to go down to travel on. They don't know whether they're private roads or public roads, but everybody expects a reasonably safe road to travel. Hyrum, according to the policy, the town has to approve the financial assistance based on whether or not a town, based on whether or not it could damage a town vehicle. I'm just...
Based, sorry, but... Based on the policy, yes. If it's determined that the condition of the road is detrimental to town-owned vehicles and the property owners are in the process of fixing their own private road, we can give assistance either 50% of the bill or $500, whichever is cheaper.
Right.
That's the policy.
That's the policy.
You've got three department heads that have gone out there and all feel the same, that those potholes are not detrimental to town-owned vehicles, but the speed bumps on that road are.
There is nothing illegal about that policy. It's applied to everyone who has been annexed at that time in 2011.
Six, I believe it was the 2006 annexation, yes. Yeah, times of annexation. But it has been used once.
It has been used only once.
And that was 2012, 13?
13.
13, a rock of forest, forest ground, one of those coasts.
Using the excuse that the property owners are upset and they're going to file lawsuits against the town is retaliation.
I would like, Hyrum, I think this time we need to send Dustin out to look at the potholes and reassess it and then if it's, I'd like to make a motion if Dustin or a lawyer looks at it and feels it's deemed to be fixed by the town, that we prove the $500 to do so.
Well, I need y'all to do a motion for that because that falls under my responsibility. But I've already said I'm sending all three of them back out at this meeting to reevaluate it, we've got pictures and we've got depths and...
Yeah, well, do what you got. So, I'll make a budget call.
Just adding my two cents, I went out there yesterday afternoon and also looked at it and I think both potholes, there's two potholes out there, that both potholes need to be repaired. Just my two cents. But I put a limit of what we have in policy of $500.
The POA was also advised to find another quote. They went with someone from Burtle Beach, not anyone within driving distance. Their quote even says how more we can do to price down. So they already got a high enough quote to fix those two potholes. So I think there are also, the woman I spoke to today has indicated that everyone called Dustin for local operators who've been probably found a better price as well. So I think this bar will...
Go ahead, Jeff.
I believe that we should honor the contract and fix these potholes for those property owners. I mean, we've been there backwards for other people in this town. This is a simple, not expensive thing, not that expensive thing to do.
I agree.
Well, clarify, we are not fixing them.
Right.
I understand, I understand, but at least that's something.
Yeah, I agree.
But I personally do not feel the need to increase the price, which is what this agenda item was originally requesting.
Exactly.
I agree with that.
You know, for a little history, this came up, when a newly elected mayor ordered town staff to fix potholes in front of one of his friend's houses. And, you know, maybe some people forget that, but I don't. And I don't have, I don't have a problem spending this money, but I still have that legal question in mind.
All right. I have a motion to make?
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Okay, I move that we disapprove the proposed policy modification effective one order. And what that means is we keep the policy as it stands at $500. Or keep the policy the way it stands.
Second?
Second. All in favor? Mr. Mayor, discussion please.
Point of order, discussion comes before the vote. After the motion and the second, but before the vote.
After the motion and the second, that's what I'm asking.
We've already voted.
You didn't ask for discussion. We've already discussed it, I thought. No, we haven't. Just let me inject something. Because I'm part of the ancient history of this culture. When I was elected mayor...
We saw the history.
No, stop, John, I was accused of something.
And you did it.
Point of order, point of order, please.
That's it.
We're moving on.
I have, I have a couple of things, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Jeff.
The parking problem solutions, I would like to remove and discuss that after, way after our season, when we've had time to evaluate the season, possibly even to January. So I would like to remove it for now, we're pending that. Parking solution, parking problem solutions, I would like to remove it from the September 17th. And I would like to...
Just take it off for now?
Take it, is that, is that...
Just remove the date.
Just remove the date.
Well, then it'll still be on the...
It'll still be on the directives. The other, the Camelann use plan discussion, I would like to change to the second meeting in October because that's more just a discussion, I don't anticipate taking any action, I think it should just be a discussion for our council members. And I think the second meeting would be more appropriate than the first meeting in October.
And that day is, place it, do you have that date?
The 15th.
15th.
15th. Yes. Okay, going back to the parking problem, I just don't want to carry out on the directives for the next five months. So if we can take that off and then when you're ready to put it back on the agenda, we just put it back on the agenda.
I have no objection.
Okay, let's just take that off.
As long as I can put it back on.
Next up is the Waste Industries...
One and two?
One and two, sorry. We skipped on one.
We're already scheduled for the next meeting.
We're at nine and three. Trending update presentation from Rod, our Neil.
He was on vacation last week and I'm going to get ahold of him this week.
Okay. Now, the Waste Industries, pick up schedules, wrap visit 10:15.
I'm still trying to get ahold of Alan, email him, request him if he's available, he hasn't gotten back.
Okay, and the Beach Rules Committee objectives?
Again, we can do either this, either leave it like it is or if you want me to take it off and put it on later, I can do that.
There's no date for it right now.
Right.
Nothing means take it off the list and put it back on the list later. Yeah, let's just take it off and then we can add it when you're ready.
Okay.
Okay, Jeff?
I'd like to add an ERC initial report for the, I think the October 7th meeting, give them time. And with that, they should appoint amongst themselves, let their chairman and secretary, they should get with the town staff and go over operating procedures, open meeting laws, minutes that are required and that type of thing. And then they should present back to us at the October 7th meeting their recommendation for some initial issues to be considered by the ERC. And remind that the Climate Mitigation Plan identified some things, it's not necessarily directed that they use that, but it's a place where they can start looking at things.
Just to remind y'all, y'all haven't established the calendar for ERC meetings yet, so there's no established meeting for September. So October 7th may be a little fast.
Should we do that now?
No, we actually have to have that prepared for y'all and brought up in the calendar. We can have that ready for September 3rd for y'all to establish their first meeting, probably until October then. Because we're going to have to consult with them prior to that to make sure what days are good for everybody.
Well, then let's look through the, the reporting back, which would be the first meeting of October November.
What's that date, you guys know whatever? First meeting in November?
I don't have any clue.
Looks like the fourth, fourth, Monday, November 4th.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would really, really like to have Robert Neal of Monet Nichols come to the council, he can make a presentation if he wants to, but I know I have a number of questions, I know the public has a number of questions. There has been, I have received many, many, many emails regarding this project that I can't really answer and I think that these questions should be asked in public so the public can hear the answers.
That's the intent, I hope. He's coming, we're trying to get him for September 3rd.
Great.
But if you want to supply those questions so he can actually answer them instead of telling you, I have to get back to you, go ahead and send the questions to us.
I don't, I don't know exactly what all the questions are, I think the public should have the right to ask questions.
Oh, you want to be a public Q and A, is what you're saying. Because you just, because, well, I put it...
I don't know that that's opening the door to that, but I would like for him to be able to answer the questions that the public has and they have a great many questions.
Right, but what I'm saying is if they've been sending you those questions, send them to us so we can send them to him so he has an idea that he can answer them, because he's not going to be able to answer it on the spot probably. A lot of those questions will probably involve him having to go back through the full plan, see what's been updated, see what's not been updated, see the history of it, and it's going to be a lot to try to go over on the spot.
I think he can answer these questions.
Okay, it'll be, each person will have three minutes to ask you a question.
Right.
Well, no, that's public comments, are you going to give everybody three minutes to ask him in a direct Q and A as well?
No.
No, I didn't think that was the intent, was it?
No, it was not.
Just the questions from the public.
Yes, they have three minutes, put the comment, that's on the agenda, so...
But that doesn't, that doesn't require a response is what I'm saying. If you want him to answer those questions, it'd be helpful if we had the questions in the...
And send an email back to your friends and they'll be able to ask questions.
I'll do the best I can, but you shouldn't be, we should not limit, we should not be required to provide him the questions before he comes before us. He should have the answers.
Well, there's a lot of technical details that you may have to look up.
Well, not all these questions are technical.
Well, then, share the questions and if you know that they're not technical.
I will do the best I can, but there are going to be questions coming that I don't give.
Well, it's on for September 3rd, so we'll see if we can get Robert in here on September Okay, does anybody have anything else they had on the directives?
Do not.
Next is public comments. Anybody have any public comments? Make a motion if you want to close session.
Make a motion to go to the close session.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.